I'd like to call this meeting to order the Lancaster County Council Committee at a whole here on Valentine's Day, February 14, 2024, and would like to really thank our group of ladies county employees.
And gentlemen.
And gentlemen, that provided us with our pre-meeting entertainment this afternoon. And with that, would you please rise and join Councilmember Billy Mosteller as he alleges in our pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Your Father in heaven, thank you for this beautiful day today. Lord, be with us today as we discuss county business, and bless each one that's here today. In Jesus' name, pray, amen.
Let's move on down to our approval of our agenda this afternoon to have a motion.
Motion to approve.
For Mr. Carr and second for Mr. McGriff, all in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval of our agenda this afternoon. Hopefully, this will be a shorter meeting, as I feel sure.
You just cursed it now.
Why do we do that?
Some might have reservations later on this evening. So with that, we have our special presentation. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Mostall, recognition of our information technology employees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Councilmembers, I want to highlight that, as you know, there's always good works going on behind the scene that helps the county run function from all of our departments. But today, we want to highlight, I'll ask Mr. Scott Hernandez as our Department Director for Information Technology to come forward and recognize three employees in particular who have really helped keep our systems up and running through a special project. And so Scott will outline that for you and then recognize our three employees here today. Scott?
Chairman, members of the council. So we had a couple of weeks ago, you know, we're in the middle of doing our ARPA updates. We've done the firewall. We're starting on the switch overhaul. So our first two buildings was admin building and 911, our data center and our 911. The guy standing behind me here, we took two 15-hour days to cut those over. It took two weeks of 10-plus hour days coming in Saturdays and Sundays, so that when we did this cut, it was a seamless transition. So I would like to thank Tim Gunnery, our operations manager, Malin Patterson, he is the network admin, and Tryston Carter as the junior net worker on their great job and what they've done.
And Mr. Hernandez, would you highlight, did you say it took 400 plug-ins, plug-outs, and other things to get that done?
Yes, so the main data room here was right over like 290, 300, and then the 911 center is additional 100 and 125. So it's pretty good.
The little things, they sometimes have to help county council get back into their emails about once every three months. I have to call and go knock on the door and they take care of me. I appreciate that.
Finding somebody's iPad, you know, we're here to help you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all again, gentlemen.
No, I was just going to ask what the rendition of Journeys Don't Stop Bleeding sounds like.
Well, I don't know about the IT one. They probably have a different one.
We have an executive session on here, but we don't have anything, so we'll move past that. And let's get right into our discussion and action items this afternoon. We have an EMS update on Medicare payment support, cost increases for the new ambulances, and staffing recruitment strategies. Mr. Clay Cato, our EMS director.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Cato comes forward, again, we've been able to bring some different department directors in front of you to talk about some of their operations and things. And so a lot going on certainly at EMS, and Mr. Cato's got some innovative strategies potentially for some revenue enhancement, and then just some other day-to-day things he's working on that does have some cost implications that we need to bring to your attention for our future action. And then we talked at our recent retreat about some of our staffing issues across the county, and Mr. Cato can outline some things related to his department. So Mr. Cato?
Y'all said y'all wanted to be here real quick, or you want me to make this like an hour and 45, you know? All of you, you notice I don't have on red. I'm not a big Valentine's fan, so I'll leave that. My wife doesn't like flowers, so I don't like Valentine's. So thank you, guys, for having me this afternoon. One of the things that we always talk about when we're in this room is money and the lack thereof, or the abundance of, and usually it's never the abundance of. So as you know, we build Medicare, Medicaid, and private insurance companies. We only receive, when we build the Medicare companies and Medicaid companies, we only receive about 25% of actually what it costs us to run that call. So through my work with the EMS Association, I have discovered there is a potential way for some additional funding, and I've invited our executive director, Mr. Henry Lewis here, who's actually been part of this process, and he is going to get down in the weeds and be able to answer questions. I've attached, or Mr. Mostall and him attached, two handouts for you. One of us is an actual proposal that we ran in 2022, and this is actually dollars and cents that could be coming to Lancaster County if we sign on to this, or if Mr. Mostall agrees to sign on this. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to let Henry talk about it, and if he has any specific, you have any specific questions about the program, let him answer that, and then I'll give you some actual dollars and cents and ask questions.
All right. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, thank you so much for allowing me to be here and speak with you guys this afternoon. The South Carolina EMS Association is a nonprofit that represents the 278 EMS agencies across our state. Just kind of for perspective, we run about 1.6 million calls for service a year across this state, and as Director Cato pointed out, most often times, that comes at a deficit. For perspective, Medicaid in South Carolina reimburses a little over $120. One dose of Narcan costs $138. So before you ever put fuel in the ambulance, you ever staff the first person, it's a losing proposition. Unfortunately, over the past two decades, we've kind of indoctrinated the public to dial 911. We're kind of that one-stop shop in the way that people access the health care system. We realize now that that's not necessarily the best thing for the patient, and is certainly not the best thing for the health care system. With that in mind, our association has worked pretty tirelessly on EMS economics, and what that means is that as part of our sustainability plan, we're trying to find new and innovative ways that we can balance the burden of providing the necessary health care coverage without doing so on the backs of the taxpayers through millages and runaway things like that. These programs that we're trying to introduce this year, both on the private and the public side of EMS, look to bring down federal dollars that are otherwise unclaimed. In about 16 states across South Carolina, there are provider assessment programs, and what these programs are specifically designed for non-governmental, so not necessarily relevant to what you guys are doing here in Lancaster County. But it affords these opportunities so that these guys can pay in a match that draws down the federal share. Medicaid is a state-run program, as you're all aware. However, there are a lot of dollars that remain at the federal level that go unclaimed each year. These programs are most commonly referred to as UPL programs, which stands for upper payment limits. Kind of the easy math on this is it's about a 300% increase in Medicaid. Specific to the ambulance supplemental payment program, which is done through a state plan amendment with Robbie Kerr and the director of Medicaid in South Carolina, this gives you guys an opportunity to increase your Medicaid revenue at absolutely no cost to the state of South Carolina, no cost to Lancaster County, no increase in millages, no increase in taxes, none of those things. This is done through a process called an intergovernmental transfer, where the state of South Carolina's Medicaid office matches the funds to make us accessible to those federal dollars that are otherwise unclaimed. On this governmental side, 16 other states in the country, predominantly red states, are the ones that have been participating in this thus far. North Carolina, Georgia, Tennessee, and Florida are already a little bit ahead of us. We partnered with a company called Public Consulting Group, as they are the industry leader in this process for how we navigate these things. Pleased to tell you that tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, I'm testifying on behalf of the state of South Carolina in front of the LCI Committee at the State House on House Bill 4113. We've worked very closely with the Association of Counties. Kent LaSane and Tim are very aware of what we're doing and supportive of this. Two years ago, South Carolina was fortunate enough to sign into law an essential services designation. That made South Carolina only the 12th state in the United States that recognizes emergency medical services as a core essential function of government. To our south in Georgia, there are EMS systems that have failed, and what an EMS failed system looks like is there are places in South Georgia right now, today, that if you dial 911, there is not an ambulance, because the state doesn't require that you have that. So that legislation was critical, but it was part of a longer-stage plan for sustainability. We work very closely with a lot of the different education providers in the state. The majority of our work is in workforce development, access to education, awareness of EMS careers, and trying to find innovative ways to control cost. You guys have a lot to be proud of here in Lancaster County, South Carolina, as you were one of the first in the state and one of the first actually in the country to move into the boot camp mentality, where you bring people in and train them locally where they have ties to the community, and you make that education accessible, and you give them the opportunity to make it something that works for their schedule. So we're very proud that Lancaster County is a member of the association. Director Cato does a lot for us, both in this economic space as well as workforce development, works through some of our advocacy efforts at the state level as well. This program is going to come into fruition likely sometime in around May or June. We have to pass the 4113 bill that I mentioned earlier for the provider assessment on the private side before we can move into working on the governmental side. The reason for that strategy is that it does not require legislation to meet the federal drawdown for governmental folks. It's just a state plan amendment that Director Kerr and State HHS Office can do internally. But we want for the rising tide to lift all ships. Across South Carolina, there are eight counties that have private enterprise that has a county contract that they provide the 911 services. So we want to be sure that what we do doesn't put any particular business model at a disadvantage. With that said, again, no risk to the county. Once this is moved into place, it will be an opt-in if you so choose, but Director Kerr and the State Medicaid Office are going to communicate through us and the Association of Counties to get you guys additional information as it moves forward. We're always happy to come up, do personalized consultations, meet with you at your leisure, bring in the subject matter experts, which are the PCG vendors that we mentioned earlier that can really get into, if you want to know everything about the granular level of Medicaid case law, they can talk to you about that. But with that said, thank you again for this opportunity. Happy to field any questions that I may be able to answer for you guys.
I'm going first.
Go ahead.
I've got a lot of.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
First of all, thank you for that great presentation. I've got a few questions here. How long is this program available in South Carolina, and why have we not heard about that, the availability of it? And does it have a cost?
Great questions. Thank you for that. One of the big reasons, I'll start with why haven't we done it sooner? These programs have existed in nursing homes and hospital systems for quite some time. If you've ever heard of the hospital bed tax, that was implemented in South Carolina in 2014. This is the same program, it's just only recently that Medicaid has expanded their rules to allow emergency medical services to participate in similar type programs. So the reason we haven't really been involved sooner is that it hasn't been a program that was necessarily available to EMS. And complete transparency, our state association has grown exponentially in recent years. Quite frankly, prior to the pandemic, we just didn't have the staff, the bandwidth, and the wherewithal to know what we didn't know. So that's why there are other states that are already involved, and we're late to the table. One of the other questions you mentioned was a cost. There is no cost. All of it is done through the State Medicaid Office. So they take the money that is already in that State Medicaid system. They use that to access the federal drawdown in what's called an IGT, or intergovernmental transfer of funds. So individual agencies and counties feel no burden from that. You have no money tied up in escrow.
One other follow-up question. You mentioned House Bill 4113.
Yes, ma'am.
Give me a little bit more information on that bill.
Yes, ma'am. House Bill 4113 is the Provider Assessment Act of South Carolina. It is currently in the Labor, Commerce, and Insurance Committee, and subdivided now into the Insurance Subcommittee. That bill applies solely to the private EMS providers. So as you look at the breakdown in providers in South Carolina, 97 agencies have 911 seen response. 71 of those agencies are private, are convalescent, meaning they're not government-owned. For them to be able to access the same type of a benefit, we can't do an intergovernmental transfer of State Medicaid dollars, because we can't apply those to a for-profit entity. This bill lets those folks do a self-imposed assessment that reaches the drawdown criteria. So super simple terms, if half of you on council are non-governmental and the other half are governmental, just speaking to you that are non-governmental, you would put in, once a quarter, X number of dollars based on your transport volume to meet the threshold. Let's just say that number, even number, was 100,000, and then you would get back 300-plus thousand. That would be equally dispersed based on the size, complexity, and volume. So we have to provide for the non-governmentals in order to be able to move forward with the governmentals as well, because it's the will of the State House that we not do for one side and not for the other. They had a very bad outcome with the nursing homes when they did that, because there are publicly and privately owned nursing homes. What ended up happening about, I guess, seven, eight years ago in that, they moved forward with only one side, and forgive my language, a pitchfork-carrying mob went to the State House and said, "You can't help them and not help us." We're on the front side, trying to be very cognizant of recognizing that EMS looks different in each community, and local solutions to local problems may vary. Whereas in Lancaster County, you guys have a very robust government-run, third-party service. There are other places in the state such as Chesterfield, Amber, Barnwell, Cherokee, Anderson County that don't have the ability to do that.
Does this require, I know, additional employee time?
It will require some manpower, because we will have to submit data to the company, such as the total amount of money that you guys give us, the total number of calls, total number of collections, those kind of things, but it's not.
Not on the individual, everyone, it's not additional.
I can handle probably in 15 minutes.
You said that you're currently getting 25% of the cost, so with this program, what will that present?
So what we would get then is about 76.9% of the money that's left in return. So just for example, and this is specific to Lancaster County, when we ran these numbers, this was in the fiscal budget year of 2022. Our total cost to run all of our EMS calls that year was a little over $8 million, 8.3, we'll say. We transported 9,022 patients. The total cost per call was $930. We got back from Medicaid $229. So I graduated from Carolina in Andrew Jackson. I'm not real good at math, but that's not even 50%. So then, the total cost that we got for the entire year was only 212,000, excuse me, that's what we were able to bill. We got total for the year $33,000 back. So if you take the, we ended up being 179 from the 212, and the federal match came out to be $137,000 if we were in this program that we would have gotten back. So you add that 137 to that 33, and you're getting back to where you need to be. And there's two types. There's the state and the federal. We have the managed care, the fee-for-service. That is the South Carolina run. And then we have the Medicaid MCO, which is more federal, and that's all your big companies, you hear man, and stuff like that. If we had used that on that, we would have gotten 743,000. So if you add the two together for that year, we would have collected an additional between 900 and a million dollars. Now, I realize that if we participate in this, it doesn't come back to my agency, it comes back to the general fund, but this is another revenue stream for Lancaster County that's not going to cost a single dime.
So you said it doesn't come back to EMS per se, it's going to come back to the general fund?
Yes, sir. But if I need a piece of equipment.
We need to recognize that in the general fund.
If I feel like I need a piece of equipment, you know, then I have a little bit of a bite in the game, and I can go to Mr. Mostall and say, "Hey, I just brought you in an extra million dollars. I got to buy some new cardiac monitors," and they may cost us a half a million dollars. So I'm kind of giving you money that I may need in the future, but if we don't need it, then it's everybody's pot to share.
So Dennis, have you heard anything about this program? You got any input?
No, we're doing some research on it, because I know there's some, I'll say, iterations of it that have been around from the other states. So I think having this legislation will help. The fact that it's being supported by the State Medicaid Office is also helpful. I think that changes the game a little bit. And so we'll continue to do some due diligence on that. We're learning about it new as well. But as of now, it's encouraging as that, I'll leave it, and something we should definitely pursue. But if we find any safeguards that aren't in place, or if we find any concerns, we'll bring them back.
I think it's a great idea. I just hope, as good as it sounds.
And thank you, guys, for your consideration in this. I think one of the things that we know is that the modern health care system is relatively flawed in how we implement it, right? We've gotten to a point to where we take people to the most expensive health care means possible, and that's not sustainable. EMS is recognized to be the epicenter of inappropriate patient transport. So what we envision long-term in our state over the next three years, as you guys are aware, we're in the second year of a two-year cycle, and a lot of folks are primarion this year. So this is a tough time to move legislation, but we're confident we can get this bill across the finish line. We've got tremendous support from the governor's office and the State Medicaid Office, as the administrator mentioned. With that in mind, our next phase of what we're going to look at, and we're happy to come back and talk to you guys in the future as we get there, is think about alternate payment, alternate transport, and telehealth. A lot of people don't recognize EMS is not actually listed as a health care provider. In the eyes of the federal government, EMS is a supplier of transportation. So what generates revenue through the commercial payers and CMS is the wheels on the ambulance taking you to an emergency department, which is truly a one-size-fits-all in a lot of instances. We envision South Carolina being an industry leader through our strategic partnerships with the Hospital Association, emergency nurses, and all of the other stakeholders that are evenly hitched in the yoke in these initiatives, to be able to reposition to where if you dial 911, maybe you don't need to go to the hospital, maybe you need a telehealth encounter, you need a community paramedic to bring you some antibiotics, you need a follow-up, maybe you need to be transported to a rural health clinic or a primary care physician versus being transported to the emergency department. We view this as the first step in a much bigger plan to try to infuse money back at the county and the agency levels, so that they can then potentially use those funds to reinvest in innovation and changing system models. So certainly appreciate your time, and we're happy to report back to Clay, that can then send it back up to you, everything that happens as we move through this legislative session.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
We got more information on it.
Now I'll get to talk for an hour and a half. Just kidding. So the next topic is expensive. We've talked about potential money. Now we need to talk about some potential needing some money, and this is with our ambulance purchases. So back in 2223 budget, you guys approved $700,000 for us to purchase two brand-new ambulances, like we had been doing for the last many years before that. Well, through this thing called supply chain issues, there's been no chassis, chassis available to build those ambulances. Well, now, mysteriously, chassis is starting to show up. But because we're about a year and a half down the road, the price has increased. So when I got the quote in for the ambulances, they were $157,000 over budget. And being the smart guy I was, I didn't want to come up here and ask you guys for an additional $157,000 without seeing if I could cut some stuff. So my ambulance committee and myself sit down, and we began to cut. We cut almost $50,000 out of those ambulances by making cabinets smaller, shrinking this there, taking off some safety features that we had added over the years. And the big thing is on the back of the ambulances, we provided the last four we bought, these lifts. They lift an 800-pound patient. It's kind of, if you think of the bread truck, where it lifts, what do they call those kind of lifts? Tommy lifts. Thank you. Brain fart. But it's kind of, it works just like a Tommy lift. That's about a $20,000 increase per ambulance. So we took those off to go back to streamlining the ambulances, and we've got the new price down to $808,000. Still about $108,000 over, but it's better than the $157 that we talked about. The items that are going to push this over are items that we have to have to run the ambulance. It's not something we can take off. We got to have a cardiac monitor, because we're a paramedic system. We got to have a stretcher, because legally, I have to carry the person on the stretcher. I got to have a stair chair, and we have to have a radio in them. So when you add the cost of those items back, it came out to 808. So to purchase the first two ambulances that we talked about in the 2223 budget, I've discussed with Mr. Mostall several times, and I actually sent him a breakdown list of what we took out, we're going to probably need somewhere in the neighborhood of about $110,000 extra.
Or two, for two ambulances from the 23 budget.
That's for two ambulances, yes.
And this, excuse me, go ahead.
I have a concern. Yeah, I appreciate you doing cost-cutting and stuff, but I have a concern where you're talking about taking lifts out to help lift heavy people into the ambulance, because one workman's comp claim could probably pay that $20,000.
It could, yes, sir. I was just trying to be financially sound with taxpayers' dollars and saying, this is, I hate to use the word luxury, it could be classified as a luxury, because the stretcher still lifts the patient with 800. You just got to now manually pick that stretcher up and put it in the back of the truck, and you probably remember some of those days.
Yeah.
But to highlight on that, the last four have that.
Yes.
But we have units right now that don't, and so if we need that, we can pull the ambulance. If there happens to be someone who needs that extra lift assist, then we do have that available. But that's part of the option of the conversation.
So if we did not do the lifts, how many would we have with lifts, and how many without?
We got four without, and the rest of them do not. Four with, and that's the last ones we've gotten.
How many without, about?
Well, we got 19 in the fleet right now, so that'd be 15.
You're good at math.
That's 15, I think. One, two, yeah, 15.
He went to Carolina.
I did go to Carolina, that is true, you know.
That's right, game clock. Ryan, I think maybe if that's our proportions, we might need to make that proportion a little bit better.
And I agree too. I don't want us to cut corners in order to cause problems down the road, and we're not talking about that much money, but if you can cut costs where it won't affect the safety of, you know, and.
Well, the safety of our employees.
Of our employees, because lifting is pretty, can get pretty bad. Is this money in this budget year?
So this is a PO that we rolled over from the 2223 budget, that's still pending from that into now. So this is the additional, this is $700,000 we got then, the budget that's closed out, I guess it's closed out, it'll be a proper term. We have rolled it over, so it's still open.
I guess my question is, when do you need the money? In this, before June or after July?
So I got off the phone this morning, five minutes before Mr. Mostall called. They have everything they need to build those trucks now, and those trucks would start being built on May the 2nd, and he said it is a 30-day turnaround, so we could have those trucks built and delivered potentially by July 1, which would be a great goal for us, then we can close that PO out in this.
And you have to pay before they start.
We pay when we pick up. So if he calls me on June 25th and said, "Your ambulances are ready for inspection," we sign off on the PO, we take it to finance, they cut us a paper check for that amount, and then we drive up there to West Jefferson, and then we inspect the truck to make sure it's to our specs, and then when it is, we hand them the check, and then we drive the ambulances back.
So my next question is a finance question. Mr. Mosteller and finance person Sabrina, where would this money come from if we don't want any price cuts and we want to, you know, do the best we can for safety? Where would this money come from, the 157,000?
So until today, we did not know the delivery timeframe, and we were thinking it was going to be into the next fiscal year. So as of this morning at 8 o'clock, the thought would be we'd. So as of this morning at 8 o'clock, the thought would be we'd include the additional cost needed, price needed in the next fiscal year. But now that it sounds like we can get this delivered, we will have to identify the funding source, either within the EMS budget or fund balance or somewhere else. And so I will come back to you with that, that recommendation. Now be clear, when Mr. Cato and his team did their cost cutting, the stretcher itself, about $20,000.
Twenty...
There is still another 35 per ambulance that you cost measured out as well. So we can bring those back to you.
I just want to say a cost that includes, make sure we're being safe. If it's some mini or something that won't affect our citizens or our staff, I'm okay, but safety, no.
Those lifts, are they, like, what percentage of calls would you estimate they're used?
We ran six calls last year that needed, that required one of those trucks to be brought to the scene that wasn't already there. So we have a truck on the north end and we have a truck on the south end that run every day with that on there. So they could have used it on a call. The truck here in Lancaster is kind of designated for those type calls. So if EMS 1 came to your house and we needed that truck, they would call a supervisor and then the supervisor would bring it. And that's how I track that.
What was the time, excuse, what's the time between, is there any lapse of time that will cause any harm or anything?
On the north and the south end with those trucks, there's not per se because it would be there. The one in the center city, we would have to get somebody else to bring it. So it'd be, depending on how far you live from Payson Highway.
But Clay, a couple of my doctor visits ago, I had a guy who taking my blood or whatever, and just in conversation, he said he had worked for EMS, not us, but I think it was in North Carolina, and that he physically had pretty well burned out. And so this was a better job being a nurse or whatever because of lifting and things of that nature. If that lift truck is on the scene, just because it happened to be the one called out, and you got a nice slim 150-year-old person like me, 150-pound person like me, would you not still use the lift?
No, sir, because it takes extra time to pull it out. And it's got pinch points on it too. So I mean, obviously it's there for if you and I are working together and we don't physically think, so, okay, I don't want to get hurt, let's use this lift. So it's a judgment call based on, you know, we got a couple of guys that look like NFL football players now that we just recently acquired from another EMS service, we'll say, and they could probably lift 500-pound guy with no problem. You and I would probably have to use the lift.
And I'll, we have another conversation coming. So before you get too wedded to wanting every ambulance to have this extra heavy lift, there's another proposal coming for more ambulances that don't have those. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So before, I want to make sure you have other information that's coming as well. But when Mr. Cato had talked about this, this was a factor. If you only have six or eight calls where it's needed every year, we do have some opportunity for cost cutting since we don't have it budgeted. We know there's some other cost overruns. It seemed reasonable. Then we were thinking, because we still have the 24, this year's ambulances on order. So we thought, well, maybe we could add some more to increase the number of lifts. But now we've got a new scenario for those as well. So we'll come back to, hold this out here that we have the 2223 ambulances. We've got still an overrun no matter what. But we were, learned our lesson, Mr. Cato. We put in the current year budget, $800,000 for the two anticipated ambulances. So we went from $700,000 two years ago up to $800,000, knowing that we had cost escalations. And today, Mr. Cato has information about this year's funded ambulances.
So yesterday, I get an email from our ambulance vendor, which precipitated our phone call today, that a county in North Carolina, Buncombe County, had ordered five ambulances. Well, because of the cost overrun, they don't have a wonderful council like we do, their council was not going to be able to buy all those five ambulances. So they were going to take three of the five. So that left two available. So it's two, that is correct. And I didn't even use my fingers this time. So he asked me, since he knew that we already wanted two in the 2324 budget, would we be interested? Now, there are some modifications. There are shorter base chassis, which means our big box that we have right now won't fit on it. It's actually about three foot shorter, these ambulances are. They're 4500s versus, we've been running 5500, which is a little more durable chassis. He said he would cut me a great deal. So I asked him what a great deal was. So he sent me a quote for those two ambulances, and they included all that stuff that I had to add to the other, less than what you guys had budgeted. So the cost for those ambulances was $727,000. You budgeted $800,000. Now, we're going to have to make some modifications to meet some of the equipment that we carry, but that cost, when we add it back to that 727, still leaves us about $8,000 under what you guys budgeted, so we would be good to go. The question is, I think it's a good idea. My ambulance committee thinks it's a great idea. They will not have the lifts on them, but what we're talking about doing is staging them in areas where we normally don't have those type calls. That doesn't mean, you know, we fly by the seat of our pants sometime. We go from one end of the county to the other. So what we would want to do is strategically place those two ambulances. And then Mr. Mastol and I talked about, in this year's budget process, when we ask for ambulances, these two would have more lifts on them. So by that time, the ones that we're running every day would be ready to retire, and we could replace them with the 2425. And it's just a process of kind of making sure we always got top-notch equipment on the road and nothing stays broken. Helps branding them out too, because they don't have to go in and out to shop so much.
Clay, let me ask you a question, and please remember, I know nothing about equipping an EMS vehicle. Can you possibly add to that once the vehicles are already delivered? If you want to add a lift, let's say, two or three years down the road, can you do that?
These two, you would not be able to. The other ones we had, yes, the answer would be. And the difference is the suspension system. These are regular chassis. The chassis we have now have what we call a liquid springs. So when you open the back door, the ambulance body goes down. You've seen the versions of the Carolina squat trucks you see lower. So this lower, so it's easier to put the stretcher in the back of the truck. These do not do that. So that's why we have, that's why, they're lower to the ground, but they do not go up and down. We'll just use that term.
Well, if we go this route, when will we have to pay for those?
So he has those chassis sitting on his ground right now. So those can start being built as early as March the 5th, if we give him the go-ahead. So we could have four ambulances with both POs closed out, which will help finance would love, before the next budget cycle starts. And then we would be called up on all the ambulances that you guys allowed us to get. One over budget, one said over budget, and one said under budget. So I'm 50/50.
And all that, two are in last year's budget and the other two is in this?
This year's budget, yes, ma'am. And that's the one Mr. Mastol said y'all approved an additional $100,000.
And Mr. Mastol, if we go ahead and do this on the 800, 700, I guess you said it'd be...
We just say 795, 790, somewhere in that ballpark. It's less than 800.
Can that be past that much money with a resolution, or will I take a three reading?
That's already adopted in this year's budget, so.
I mean, the new ones.
These in this year's budget, you've already approved it.
800,000 is in this year's budget, and so we're fine.
One, two is in last year's budget?
Okay, yeah, okay, that for 2223.
This is more just for information to make sure there's no heartburn from you guys if we buy something that's a little bit different, as long as we're happy with it, with money you guys already approved.
As long as it works for your operation and you know it's going to work and even...
We'll paint it pink and put hearts on the side of her Valentine's.
Even if you have to, you know, direct those to areas that may have less calls or whatever, then, you know, for me, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
But what is on the table that I need to bring back to you is our FY23 budget, where he said he did the cost cutting, he pulled out the lifts. But even with that, we're still $110,000 for the two units that we've got identified funding. Yeah, yes, we'll have to do a budget amendment for that.
But what if we do that with a resolution or ordinance?
That would be a budget, ordinance would be, it'd be three readings for.
So we'll need that sometime in March or...
Yeah.
I do think it would be good if you got up to like eight with the lifts, and that way you could have them closer proximity where you're not having to bring them as far.
It would be nice to have eight, even 10. And that would be, there would be one at every station, so you could make that your first-out truck.
All right. Anything else?
We did have one, one more topic for him.
One more topic, and then I'll sit down and y'all can go eat candy and steak.
It must be a short meeting.
You want me to make this one long, Mr. Graham?
We still got one more topic, y'all.
Oh, okay. So first of all, let me thank you guys for last year's salary increase. The 10% has really helped. We have taken our vacancy rate from about 15 last year when I stood here during the budget process to today, as I ran the numbers, we have seven vacancies. However, there's a new game in town, and it's called recruitment and retention from other agencies. So the state has worked through the hospital association, and they are now recruiting our paramedics to work in the ER. Last week, I had four decide that they want to go to work at MUSCL, making more money than I can pay them, between $24 and $28 an hour, 12-hour shift, in a controlled environment, and they have the same benefits as we do. So as this begins to take hold, I feel like that our vacancies could go back the other way. And we've also got, some of the counties around us have begun to change their work schedules. The county south of us that starts with a K that I won't mention is moving to a 2472 schedule, and they're paying their people the same rate. Now, what it ends up being is they work 30 days less for the same amount of money as they're making now. But if they work over, their overtime rate is tremendously low. They only make like 1,100 bucks a year in overtime, where some of our people making as much as 25 and $30,000 a year in overtime. That's where our people make the money, is when they work the extra hours at the time and a half. Not sure if they're going to allow those people to do that. But this is just some of the competition factor that's going to be out there. And I updated Mr. Mastol on this, and he wants you guys to know it as we begin the budget process. If we lose, if we start going the other way, then we're going to have the same problem we've had in the past, staffing trucks. And I thought there was some light at the end of the tunnel, and then a train hit me.
I think we're going to have to be creative like everybody else.
I agree, I agree. A good place to work only goes so far nowadays. Most of the first questions they ask is, what is my annual salary? And of course, we don't quote annual salaries, we quote hourly rates, simply because we can't guarantee that you're going to, if you're an hourly person, that you're going to work every day that you're scheduled. I can tell you what you potentially could make, and that's more than most of the people, but they still, some of these young people. And we usually only keep them about five years, and they move on to a different career because of back injuries and shoulder injuries and whatnot.
All right.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Cato.
Thank you, guys.
Now, we got other, Mr. Cato, we'll move on down to 8B. We have an update on our solid waste study Phase 2 presented by Jeff Cato, Director of Public Works, and Mark Schumpert, P E K C I Technologies. Mr. Cato, Mr. Schumpert.
Good afternoon, members of council. It's good to be here. I was thinking about maybe serenading y'all for Valentine's, but I kind of lost my voice along the way, so I'll use that as an excuse. But anyhow, we're here today to update you all on the solid waste study that's been ongoing the past two fiscal years and that we hope to continue to finish out. We gave it about a three-year timeframe to do that, and things, you know, like everything else, things go fast, things go slow at times. But Mark Schumpert is here to assist us with this and has been a good asset to the county. And like I said, this all, everything around us, we all know, growth dictates everything. And growth also will be dictating solid waste in the near future. So we're looking at any and all options there to, number one, keep our level of service up, and number two, try to keep the cost down because it is a rising cost in that industry as well. So with that, for the little presentation, I'll turn it over to Mr. Schumpert, and then I'll come back for the last slide and kind of explain what's hopefully to come with the solid waste study. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for having me again. I want to go ahead and move through this presentation. Some of these are refresher slides from the last time I was here with you toward the end of last year. So this is from the county's recycle map. It's online. The full map shows all of the different convenience centers around the county. Since today, we're speaking about the Irwin Farm site and the Rich Hill site. I've got those two highlighted there. And then just for reference purposes, the transfer station, mining road, and the closed landfill are all marked on there as well, just so you can kind of get a feel again for how these places are located and proximated to each other. And of course, sit any time, stop me if you have any questions. So the first site we wanted to explore with you is the Irwin Farm site. This is a county-owned property. It's just under five acres. You know, the whole reason we're looking at these things is for capacity. You know, we need to be able to accommodate more of the citizens of the county and the waste they produce and get that stuff processed and out to the landfills. And so looking at the county-owned sites, Irwin Farm and Rich Hill, so for this site, we wanted to look at two different options, one with stormwater permitting and one without. And these are just, again, just to kind of refresh your memory on what this site looks like out there. The Irwin Farm site is on Bethel Road. So this is a concept drawing where we would disturb more than an acre of the land and have to go through some stormwater permitting. What we're trying to do with both of the sites is move to a dedicated entry and exit instead of having a shared driveway the way they're both set up now, get a better flow of traffic through the site. What we've done here on this site is, similarly to the Indian Land site, separate the roll-off trucks that come in and pick up the containers with the gravel area you see there. And then the waste drop-off would be, you know, these are all conceptual. So until we get into the design and grading, it's hard to say exactly how many would fit and how it would be set up. But the goal would be to have these as raised platforms where you can just dump your waste over the edge, the railing, into the containers, much like the Indian Land site, if you've ever been there. And so you can see we've got the stormwater area designated there. And again, in one reason too, let me just point out, Bethel Road, what you can't really see here is to the, to the south, that road curves a good bit. And so right now, the existing entrance, let me go back for a minute, that existing entrance you see there on Bethel, for a car making a turning movement out, their site distance to the south is limited because of the curve in the road. And so with this design, we make that lower, that southern entrance entry only, and then move the exit up so that it improves site distance to something that would actually meet DOT requirements. And then if we didn't want to go to the expense of doing, you know, a larger site improvement such as that with the permitting, this is a concept where we keep the existing paved area, which is the lighter gray, and the entrance where it is now. And then we just basically add on and add some more driveways, do that dedicated exit on the northern end there, and just create more space for more containers, open it up, improve the traffic flow through the site. I'll move now to the Rich Hill Convenience Center. This one is down on Joshua Tree Road. This one was only recently purchased by the county, just within the last few years. And so what you see there right now is the way it looks on GIS, with all of it being one big property, a zoom in on the site that's there. And again, just some pictures to refresh your memory on what this site looks like. So what we've done here, this site, because it is a very irregular triangle shape, this one's only about three acres in size, much more limited in the options that we could do here. So what we've done is shift the existing driveway to the west a little bit to line it up with that Smokey Joe Road. Always a good idea to have driveways like that lined up when you can. So if we were doing this improvement, we'd recommend that become the dedicated exit point of the site. And then the entrance you see on the far left there would be a dedicated customer entrance. So customers would only come in that entrance. so customers would only come in that entrance, but it would also be a dedicated entry and exit point for the, for the haul trucks. So the trucks would come in there, they would go into that gravel area there and go out the same way. So they're not getting in the, the, the traffic flow that goes around the site and into the container area. And so the containers would be up on a raised platform, again, on the far right of the site there. All right. Any questions about either of those sites before we, we switch to the landfill?
The, the volume on the Irwin Farm site, is it increased the, in the, on, on both of these sites, if they?
Yes, both of the sites that they have increased. The Joshua Tree site just has, has been growing over the years. It's not because it's a high-growth area, it's just, I guess more people are using the center out that way as opposed to a privatized service. The Irwin Farm site is, is one of our top ones anyway, you know, too, that's one of two that kind of serve central Lancaster. So if something happens at the Linwood site and it fills up, we refer them to Irwin Farm and vice versa. And also, too, with the, with the stuff going on down there around Edgewater, we're seeing a, a growth at the, some of that traffic is also utilizing the Irwin.
So your recommendation on that site would be the, to the major overhaul with the full blood over one acre?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be staff's recommendation, I'll get to that.
Okay, that's all.
This is another refresher slide from the last time I was here, when we were basically laying out the pros and cons of the Water Sewer District property that the county has been looking at as a potential site versus the closed landfill. And so, just to kind of bring you back up to speed again, I wanted to show these slides again. Either site would require rezoning, they're currently both zoned as open space preservation. A collection site, such as a convenience center, would need to be zoned as institutional, industrial, or rural business. The Water Sewer District site is adjacent to compatible zoning districts, a little bit easier to rezone typically. The landfill is surrounded by residential districts, which tend to means, maybe perhaps more resistance to a rezoning. And just wanted to get that information out there again. Also, the landfill is county-owned, whereas the Water Sewer District property is not and would have to be purchased. The Water Sewer District property is closer by several miles to the Linwood Drive site and the more urbanized areas of, of Lancaster. And portions of the closed landfill could be used for recreational activities, both the areas where waste has been placed and areas where there hasn't been waste placed. So those are just some of the, you know, the pros and cons that we looked at previously. So jumping over to the closed landfill, that's what we want to discuss today is, you know, could that site, how could we use that site? So here's just an aerial view. So the area in the red box, that's the first area you come to after you come through the gate. It was most likely where the scale house and, and attendants were for processing and, and weighing the trucks in and out of the landfill. The first area of actual waste placement is further back in, into the site where you see that next clearing to the west. So this is the, one of the concepts we came up with. This is about two acres of land disturbance to create this. So again, a, a loop road to help with better traffic flow, the gravel area for the, the haul trucks, and then a couple of raised platforms behind a retaining wall for the roll-off containers, so folks can just pull in there and, and put their waste out. There would also, there would be enough room, too, to do a few extra boxes for miscellaneous recyclables and things like that. And then we would have a stormwater management area on the south side there that you see. Any questions about that site?
My big concern is that, you know, that used to be our landfill, and the bridge, right before you get to it, is not adequate to support heavy truck traffic. And there's going to be a lot of opposition from the public that live around that site.
Yes, sir.
If we open it back up.
And we, that bridge was discussed at the last solid waste study update that we did. I didn't bring it up again today, but yes, that, that bridge is a matter of consideration.
And I do want to highlight that we, because we've had a conversation, I think, about the Water Sewer District site next to the reservoir, may have a different purpose now. The ownership may want to do a different purpose, it may not be an option for these comparisons. But why we've kind of deferred to the Water Sewer site was because of bridge issue on Linwood Drive, but we know that this was requested to do a comparison, so it still is an option. Don't know if there's a better option geographically located to the current Linwood site, but again, we just want to make sure you had that, knowing that the Water Sewer site we originally looked off, off the page in Kershaw Highway, is no longer as viable as we thought. Now, what I also, excuse me, I also will say that I've been on the site and out on the landfill, I don't know if you've been on the closed landfill, but there may be some other options out there in terms of how we might utilize that land potentially for some recreational activities or other things. Since it's our site, we own it, we need to make sure that we, had it closed now for several years, that there could be some permissible uses on that, to repurpose that landfill site. So how we might utilize a larger landfill site may make us rethink if we want a convenience site as the entrance to that, as we're talking about the Parks Master Plan as part of the strategic plan, that's part of the consideration. So there's a lot of things in play, but we want to make sure you do know that we do have an option here for you.
You said there would be two acres of disturbed?
Approximately, if we, if, with this current concept, yes.
How does that compare in size with the existing landfills at the Linwood site?
Uh, the existing.
Is that two additional acres or is it two acres overall?
So the area, this, it, these improvements that are on the screen are about two acres. The Linwood Drive site, the existing site I think you're referring to?
Correct.
I don't know, what size would you, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Yes.
It's very tight. I would say it's, it's, it's maybe acre?
Maybe.
Of usable space.
Access is the problem with the Linwood site is.
Nope, nope.
Yeah.
With a turn lane where it's at, because you got a bridge next to the entrance and uh.
It's no way.
It's a.
Traffic flow is, is unbelated.
Perfect location.
Traffic flow is terrible.
Yeah, but that's, that's a big issue and I, I don't know where you could put a second entrance, there's no.
There were, there was also the conversation, we said when the Water Sewer District site may not be an option, is to look further down Meeting Street into the city, near the recycling center, out, trying to bypass in Meeting Street. So there could be another option to explore that could be in proximity. I don't know if people feel like that's in proximity or not compared to this site. So there still have been some emerging conversations based upon the Water Sewer District site not being as probably available.
Can you sleep on me? Can you advance the slide for me? I can't get this clicker to work. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff to go through this slide.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, just to kind of wrap this up, again, when we started this study, again, kind of our, we know a lot of things we want to do with the study, we know what, hopefully the results that this study brings us, but the culture kind of tips us back to where we know now, too, we feel like coming out of this, we, we are going to know that we want to own more of our sites than lease them. So the recent, recent purchase of the Rich Hill property kind of pushed that up the, the radar there for us, too, and we, we know the condition and the access at the Linwood Drive, so we're just kind of looking on that. And again, as far as the future studies go, we want to assess our current agreement with the transfer station and landfills, because as we know, we're a unique county as to where we neither own nor operate neither a landfill nor a transfer station. So basically, all of our solid waste pickup is basically contracted out, so to speak, under contracts and agreements with the city of Lancaster, which is a good program, but again, it's over 15, almost 20 years old now, and probably needs a little bit of revamping and, and sit down with both parties and go over some things of that nature. Another thing, too, we, recycling, again, we really want to assess this recycling program or lack thereof, but we all know why recycling is on the route it's on, it's just simply because it's too costly right now. Now, we are getting lots of more calls and interest and we're trying to address that with staff, grants, our Keep Lancaster County Beautiful program, you know, DEHEC action in the classroom to try and see what's out there. We recently spoke with York County a little bit, their council's going to talk to see if they, they entertain the idea of taking recyclables from outside of York County, which that might be a possibility there if the costs were, were right to that. But basically, right now, we're, we're getting rid of municipal waste, you know, for around $50, $60 a ton, and recycling, you're $90 to $110 a ton to recycle. So that's, that's, that's really what's killing that program. But again, with this study and having resources like Mark, is to look into that, see what kind of options are out there to plan for, for the future, because we still think we're, we're all waiting on a big recycling comeback. Again, and we need to assess our waste tire program. As you know, the Public Works facility is also a licensed tire facility, which means we're a drop, we can be a drop-off point for licensed haulers between here and, and the, the major collection center around here is US Tire out of Concord. So we need to address that from stockpiles. Again, that's, that's something countywide that's a problem, but we've just run into that supply-demand chain you're talking about, where we're not supplied enough trailers, we don't have enough staff now that we no longer utilize inmate labor. It's just getting those things loaded and getting them picked up has caused a lot of stockpiles. Our permit only, we're only supposed to have 1,500 tires on the ground, which that, on the ground includes also in any trailers that we have. So we've been over that for a long time, working with DEHEC and had to ramp up some extra contract, get some open-top trailers down there. So we want to assess that program and, and see, too, you know, we, we may have to look at a way to establish some type of tipping fee for, for the tire haulers that want to use our facility. That, that could be in the, in the works, not a popular idea, but got to do something. Again, truck scale, scales at the Public Works facility, that can just help us all in the long run, it track everything that comes in and out of there a lot better. I mean, we currently take recyclables, brush, and tires there, as well as use it as a yard lay-down stockpile. And the, for the pickups there, especially for the electronics, just for our benefit, let's weigh those trucks coming in and going out just to, just to make sure, a good, good program to have there. Again, our electronics program, we, we are able to collect them at a central location, which is recommended but not required by DEHEC, as versus having a can at each site to let you drop those things off. You drop them off at Page and Highway, or we do have enough space at our Indian Land site, it's newer, bigger, more modern, with better traffic flow, so we, we have a facility up there. We just want to look into that with e-waste grants and things of that. And then again, Public Works master planning, things may happen out there. That's a campus-type piece of property there, so we want to look at long-range future planning for that, which the majority of it would include solid waste. And since we already have tires, a, a brush drop-off facility and electronics there, look at a way to possibly converting that into a center. Again, that's county-owned property. And then, you know, regional convenience centers and more capacity. One thing that's probably going to come back, and you know, we're way behind in this, is if, if there were a demand or a need for another center somewhere in the county, let's just say up north, more in the Panhandle, our vision was the Indian Land Center was going to be a, what we would call a super center. We'd have one in centralized Lancaster as a super center and maybe one around Kershaw down south and have three super centers. If our Indian Land sites currently are super center, it's already overcrowded, that, that one has come up. It doesn't generate as much household waste as Linwood Drive and Irwin Farm, but it, the, the contributing factor to that is probably most of those county residents utilizing that center have curbside pickup. But as far as your other things disposed of there, like your C and D and, and couches and things like that, Indian Land's by far the more volume, most volume site we have now. So wrapping all that up, headed to, into the budget process, we, we know we're going to be looking at different areas, different areas for sites. Staff is probably going to look at maybe, because it is in the capital project fund or plan, excuse me, to upgrade convenience centers, we would look at, possibly looking at trying to get the Irwin Farm Center and/or the Rich Hill Center upgraded, maybe a budget request this year, we're, we're working on that as hard as we can. The only problem with upgrading a site like Irwin Farm is you pretty much have to shut it down. We're, we're looking at, you know, in a perfect world, maybe you could get all that done in a month, but you're looking at shutting down a Lancaster County convenience center for three months at a time, that's just not, you know, for the residents that use it. And conveniences them to go even, like if it's Irwin Farm, to go to Linwood. If it's Joshua Tree, to go to the racetrack or come to Public Works or something, so that's, all those things we're going to be looking at. We hope to wrap this study up by 2025, but again, we're just in the phases for that and just wanted to update you. So if you have any questions, I'll take them now, if not.
Jeff, remind us how many owned stations versus leased stations we have, and is there any way to build more capacity into the current station in Indian Land? Because I remember trying to find sites for that and we struck out a lot of times before we finally got a ball hit out into the field.
Yes, and unfortunately with, when we wound up with that site, we were tickled to death to get one up there and build one. It's just not really laid out for a lot of expansion. We'll definitely be looking, looking into that. I believe now with the Joshua Tree purchase, I believe that makes five of our sites county-owned versus the other seven as being leased. That's, you know, one of the areas we definitely want to improve on. So if we, we could purchase more, that's great, because like what you said, if you go out and start looking for land now, you, it, it is a challenge. It's a challenge because odds are you have to get the property rezoned and then just the construction costs alone, we were looking, when we were looking at the Water Sewer property and we understand that may be on hold for a little while now, and we understand that, but you were looking at just the construction cost there of almost a million dollars, just to build a convenience center, so.
Do we have long-term leases in all the leased sites? And are they, do we have extensions on all of them?
No, we don't have long terms on any of them, I don't believe. It's just basically a, yeah, they're.
A few years out.
No, I mean, what you said, a lot of them are year-to-year, so we are at the peril in some of these. So yeah, we don't, we don't have long-term leases on many of them. And I think the longest, we may have two or three years left on two of them.
Is that something that we could start negotiating with all the landowners? Are they, are they the ones that are looking at, at the year-to-year?
They.
It used to be five years and then they wanted to go to bury many of the land.
No, that's fine, thank you. Any other questions?
More questions?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Kato.
Thank you.
Mr. Schumpert.
Now, the first Kato brought us a million dollars, the second Kato didn't bring us anything.
There's no can.
This meeting is usually scheduled from four to six o'clock. If, if there's no objections and I can have a motion to adjourn, we will, we will go ahead and adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion for Mr. Graham, a second for Mr. Carnes. All in favor, raise your right hand, right hand. We have unanimous approval, this meeting is adjourned.
Okay. We're going to mark this one down in the book.
Thank you, Steve.